Good morning. It's nine o'clock and I'll call to order the May 3 meeting of the Selen County Commission. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick. Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Bidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Yes ma'am.
Now if we could all stand for a flag salute in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now have our citizens input where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, we will go on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of approval prior minutes, approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of disposition of property, approval of memo for appointment of community corrections director, approval of contracts and agreements, approval of accounts payable, approval of payroll, approval of the public forum agenda as presented. Any commissioners wish to address, amend any of these?
Mr. Chair, I'd move we approve as presented, the consent agenda.
Second motion.
We moved and second that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero. All right, we now move into our action items. Item number one.
Mental Health Month proclamation, Roger Barnhart, Crisis Director, Central Kansas Mental Health Center.
Good morning, Roger. Yes.
Good morning, thank you. So, the proclamation basically says, whereas the mental health of every citizen is essential to the emotional and economic prosperity of our families, communities, and businesses in Selen County, and mental health is a component of every individual's overall physical health and emotional well-being, and whereas mental health, mental illness affects people of all ages, races, ethnicities, and income levels in Selen County, and whereas suicide is the second leading cause of death for Kansans aged ten to thirty-four. Whereas mental health conditions are not only common, they are treatable, and early and effective intervention can save lives, whereas we recognize the impact of the pandemic on our collective mental health, with one in three adults reporting depression or anxiety, and whereas untreated mental illness leads to higher rates of emergency department visits, hospitalizations, school dropouts, unemployment, and suicides, and whereas we strive to create communities in the Commonwealth to support mental wellness by increasing access to treatment, educating ourselves and our communities about mental wellness and mental illness, and supporting our citizens as they seek to improve their mental health, and whereas greater public awareness about mental health can positively transform attitudes about and towards people with mental illness, made easier for our citizens to seek help for mental health care.
Very good. Do you have any activities planned this month to celebrate Mental Health Month?
Do we have any external?
Yeah, we're doing a mental health first aid.
We need to, we need to have you at the mic, please, so our audience can hear you.
Thank you. On May 25th, we're doing a public mental health first aid class. If you're not familiar with mental health first aid, it's a great opportunity to learn more about like the common mental health challenges that many people face and how is a regular citizen, you might be able to intervene and support someone that you know who's having a challenge and help them find help. So that is Wednesday, May 25th. We will also have a Cause Latte at Astra, if you're familiar with that, so they're going to help us kind of just get the word out about like what fundraising is. So lavender lemon latte, kind of uplifting springtime drink, and you can stop in there and it's a kind of a fundraising effort as well, and just learn more about what Central Kansas Mental Health does to support people who are facing challenges.
Very good. Thank you much.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would be pleased to declare May as Mental Health Month in Selen County.
Second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and second that we approve May as Mental Health Month in Selen County. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Roger, if you could come forward now.
Photo op.
Photo op there. Thank you, Roger.
Make sure the board gets to see that photo op, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two.
Provider Appreciation Day proclamation, Liddell Edgar, Childcare Workforce Development Consultant.
Good morning, Liddell.
Good morning. It's wonderful to be here. Whereas home childcare providers and childcare center providers are providing quality early education for young children, and a valuable investment in our children's future, and whereas family childcare professionals play an important role in cultivating, supporting, and educating young children in a warm, loving, and culturally competent environment, in both home and in center-based settings to meet the needs of families, and whereas Selen County recognizes childcare providers as an essential workforce for our economy, that allows families access to childcare that they need so that they can work, and whereas by calling attention to the importance of quality childcare services for all children and families in our communities, Selen County childcare providers are working with other organizations locally and statewide to enhance the quality and availability of such services, and whereas Selen County will join families and organizations nationwide in recognizing childcare providers, teachers, and educators for their efforts of caring for the children of working parents, and providing them with quality early childhood experiences in home and center-based care, and whereas Selen County residents are encouraged to recognize their childcare providers throughout the county for their dedication in providing quality care and learning services for the important role that they play in our children's future. Now, therefore, as Selen County Commissioners of Selen County, Kansas, we provide, we ask that you approve May 6th childcare provider appreciation in Selen County.
Very good. Have you any activities going on to celebrate?
As a matter of fact, yes. May 6th, which is Friday, there is going to be a ice cream social for childcare providers to celebrate what they do and to thank them for the important role that they play in Selen County.
Well, I know that childcare providers are vastly needed here in Selen County. I hope that by recognizing this day, maybe we can put a highlight on it and maybe get more providers here in Selen County.
That's a great idea, and while I'm up here and have the microphone, I have to give a shout out to the Selen County Health Department, because their staff are working diligently to increase the access to childcare. They have billboards that are going up shortly, or they might already be up, that talk about childcare, and they also have radio ads. I think that's gone above and beyond for Selen County Health Department, and I applaud that work.
Well, thank you. We'll make sure that Jason gets that.
Great, thank you.
Applaud.
And I have a question, Liddell, before you leave. Is that ice cream homemade for the social?
Are you ready?
Not my committee, sorry.
My guess is no, but you know, maybe.
Who knows?
Thank you.
All right.
Would you like a motion?
I sure would, if you would.
Chair, I would move that we declare May 6th, 22, as Provider Appreciation Day in Selen County.
Second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and second that we declare May 6th as Provider Appreciation Day in Selen County. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Liddell, if you'll come forward. Let me come around.
Can you turn towards me? Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, item number three.
RFA 141-22, Selen County Sheriff's Office and Jail Facility Transition and Activation Services. Sheriff Roger Solden.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, Commissioners. This request is to enter an agreement with VRJS, which is Jim Robertson's firm, for the transition to the new facility, the planning, and would be, they'd provide consulting work for several years with us with the jail facility since we started down this road in 2010. They actually were involved in the one prior in the nineties. The scope of work, services that would be provided is to include scheduling for the facility, all the movement and everything in the facility, FF and E, policies that the facility would establish, staffing, training, conducting securities shakedown, operational shakedown, planning our move, and a post occupancy evaluation of how all that plan is put into place. So it'd be my recommendation that we do this. Jim Robertson and his firm are very familiar with what the public expects from this project and what the county expects from this project and what I expect, and I really think that their expertise could help us with this. The basic services would run $86,400 with up to an additional $49,000 depending on how much of each one of these areas we worked in. This would be funded out of our contingency for the project, which has a remaining balance of $2 million and $12,000, and so maximum cost would be $135,400.
All right, I'm going to show my ignorance. I'm not really familiar with the owner's contingency fund. What else will be coming out of this funding?
So that's money that we've set aside for anything that sort of crops up during the project. So it could be something that is, something that just wasn't covered in design, that we need to add on, or it could be a change order. The commission has previously given authority for the sheriff and myself to sign off on some change orders up to a certain dollar amount. So it's, you know, it's very typical that there's a contingency in a large construction project. The contractors have one on their side, and then we also have one on the, on the county side as well to just deal with any issues. So certainly hope we don't spend the full $2 million, but it's there in case we need it.
Okay, thank you.
Is the $2 million, is that part of the 89 million?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Roger, could you elaborate a little bit about this JRJS? I understand it's a specialty service, and I'm very impressed with Jim over the years. Like you mentioned, he did the.
He does lots of things from, starting with the needs assessment. He's the one that came up with our space program, the number of beds we would need in the facility. We had discussions about the type of facility we'd want to run because there are several different types, and the decision that we made on how the place was run, if it was direct supervision or indirect supervision, he helped walk through that and the pros and cons of each one of those, and helped us with that. As you know, he's came before this board several times and gave presentations, but in this role, there'd be a group, most of the work would be done by members of the sheriff's office, but he would, he would lead us down that path of what we need to consider, making that schedule up, when we need to be training the people to run the facility, how that equipment's going to run, making sure that all those places are in place. You know, I mean, you know, he's done this for many years and has the expertise to do it. I've only occupied one building at that time. We, when we moved into the new facility we're in, or the new jail in 95, I was driving around in a patrol car, so I missed all that transition, but you know, there are things that we have to put into place, like where is certain equipment going to be placed, how that's going to work in the workflow and all that, and what's we're wanting is him to lead this with his experience down this path, and so we have a little smoother transition than just, here's an empty room, have at it.
So in essence, there's a lot of bells and whistles to be learned.
There's a lot of things to be learned, but, but it's, you know, a year, a year from now seems a long time off, but when you start backing the calendar up, a lot of things need to be in place for that to happen, and he's.
And my last.
We're looking for his direction to make that happen.
Okay, I appreciate that. My last question is, are there other people that provide this professional service?
They, I tried to reach out to see if anybody else had any recommendations to just the Kansas sheriffs and didn't get anything back from them, but I'm sure there are probably some people that nobody that's as familiar with this project or you guys and us, and I mean, he's been involved all the way along, and he's had conversations since, even since the, the things that he's done ended, he's kind of kept in contact because he's interested in seeing this project through.
Good guy to have on board.
Yeah, I believe so.
At what point in time would Mr. Robertson come on board? I'm sure he's probably doing some planning right as we speak, but what time would he be physically in Salona, Kansas?
If, if this would be.
Would the building be going up?
No, if this would be approved, we would start this next month in June.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I move we continue to use VRJS to assist in the transition to the new facility.
Second the motion.
Been moved and seconded that we adopt RFA 141-22, Selen County Sheriff's Office and Jail Facility Transition and Activation Services. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Before you leave, Sheriff, not to get off task, but we watch the numbers, the jail numbers daily we get, and I've noticed that there has been, over the past two, three, four weeks, quite a spike in numbers.
Yeah, there's been quite a spike in numbers, but it hasn't been a new spike in new admissions, so they're just not getting out of jail, and that's.
What do you mean by that new admissions? Meaning, meaning they're repeat offenders?
No, no, the, the number of bookings we have, the new bookings, our bookings haven't really changed, so.
They're just guests for a longer period of time.
They're just, they're just here longer at the moment, yeah.
Okay, yeah, it's.
And we've, and we've got a, one of the trends we've seen is, is the number, the serious crimes, the severity of the crimes that people are coming to jail for is, it's not a new trend, but the last four years, we've seen that increasing. Not the number of crimes necessarily, just the types of crimes that are being committed.
During COVID, the numbers dropped dramatically, and now I didn't know if it was tied to the court systems, judges.
Well, yeah, the reason that people are in jails is because the courts still have them tied up, so until they release them or they're able to post bond, we'll have them.
And the pre-trial that Community Corrections has, percentage wise, do, I mean, are there quite a few of these that are in that program, or can you accurately state that?
I don't, I don't really know. I don't have the figures on that. I'd hate to speak for them, but you know, they, they have helped us, but you know, if, if someone's out on pre-trial and they commit new crimes and it's, it's at a point where they, they can't be out, then that's where we land, but yeah, it's, the courts are backed up, we realize that. I know the county attorney's needs help, you know, he needs, he needs more people, and that's what it's going to take to get things flowing, you know, the, I'm sure it's no surprise to you guys about the new judges we're getting. I think all those things will help the court process move along, but nothing's going to move until Jeff gets help with the county attorney's office.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Where are we at? Item number four.
RFA 145-22, Carpel Prosecutors Software, Jeff Ebel, county attorney.
Quite the segue here.
It is. I appreciate that very much, Sheriff. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. This is pretty straightforward today, at least. The software package that we're using in our office right now is Full Case, it's part of the full court package that's been currently being used here in Selen County and across the, most of the courts here in Kansas. That's no longer going to be functioning, it's going to be shutting down, being transitioned over to this Odyssey program. It's where the courts are going, so we need to get new software with our office that's going to be able to effectively communicate with the Odyssey application, and that's going to have a foundation with the provider to keep us up and running, because as, I guess later this year even, or maybe into next year, the Full Case application, that program's, they're not going to update anything. I guess they're going to totally pretty much shut down, there's not going to be support services or anything for anymore. So I could tell the commission that every day I keep seeing a list of other county attorney agencies across the state who are going with this prosecution package. My office has sampled it, demoed it. My staff like it. I know Brad Bowers with IT has gone over this as well, pretty extensively, as the proposal says, they highly support this as well. My understanding, it's already been budgeted for, because we knew this was coming, so this isn't a shock to anybody, but this is, at this point in time, is our recommendation that we go with this software. It's the best out there. It's only, only this or this Tyler program. We can't get Tyler even to respond really back to us, and the things we have heard about it, it is not good. So we're asking the court, or the court, that's an old habit there, we're asking the commission to approve this. I'll take any questions?
Questions of the commissioners?
My, my question, Jeff, is you're allocated, position wise, how many attorneys are, if you were fully staffed, how many attorneys would that be?
Including myself, there'd be eight of us total. There'd be eight total.
Eight?
Including myself.
And you have how many now?
There's six of us right now.
So you're too short.
Too short, and I could tell the commission that I got one for sure leaving at the end of July, first part of August, and I have another one who's slated possibly to go. I brought it up last time, she was supposed to be going to Army JAG, and that got delayed till August as well, so in theory, I could be down more.
Mr. Chair, could I request our IT director, Mr. Bowers, to give his input? Sorry, Brad.
No worries. So the district court is mandated to change to the Odyssey program from the full court application that they've been using for many years. The 28 judicial district has been put off from implementation for probably four or five times, so this, this project is late coming to the table. So the, the carpal application that we're talking today will be used exclusively by the county attorney. This software will be used so that they can charge cases. This is the legalese language that goes into charging a drug case or whatever, and this, this software and this, this language needs to be imported into the Odyssey system, and that's, that's how, that's how a county attorney will get a case on the docket in the Odyssey application. This will be done. The carpal software will interface with, with a application the court uses called eFlex. So the county attorney will, will charge the case, they'll send the case to eFlex, it will get imported into the Odyssey system, and then get processed for, for. the Odyssey system and then get processed for, for, for adjudication. The, the contract that you have in front of you is for $126,000, $126,900. There are two optional items that are in the, that are in that $126,900. And that is a, a portal interface. So attorneys, defense attorneys, can come in and, and get the reports, et cetera, that the county attorney generates, sort of a self-help portal. And there's also money in this for, for what we call a New World interface. New World is the application that the, that the sheriff's office, city police, that's their records management system. And this, this application will interface with that as well, which will be a big help when it comes to data accuracy. So there, the, in the contract, there's some, there's, uh, what do they call it? The terms of payment, the terms of payment will be based on when this actually gets installed and implemented. And I think right now, we're out into June of 2023, which that could slip. But that's up to the vendor. So the point being is the maintenance items in this, in this contract will, will not come due until the software gets implemented.
Brad, no big deal, but you said $126,900. Our paperwork says $125,900. So which one is correct?
That $126,900.
So our paper I've got in front of me is incorrect. Also, you used a word in there that's being mandated by the Sling County 28th Judicial Court.
Yes.
I, I don't see that in here, but that, that makes it a lot more clear for me to, to almost-
It's not the 28th Judicial District that's mandating it, just for clarification. It's the Kansas Office of Judicial Administration that's mandating it go statewide. So some jurisdictions, like the 8th Judicial District, which is Dickinson and Geary and that area, they've already made this transition, but they're rolling it out across the state, one district at a time. So we've known this was coming for a while. That's why Brad was able to put money in the budget this year.
But it is being mandated by-
Yes, by the courts, not by us.
The Odyssey application-
All right, I just see this-
That will be the court record management system is what's being mandated.
Again, when, when these mandates are handed forward, I mean, our, our hands are kind of tied, even if we have an objection. So the money's there. And thankfully, we looked at, and we budgeted this last year, and were able to project this coming. And not much else can be said.
Clarify something, Brad. And I agree with Commissioner Vedrickson, the money's there and it's coming in under what was budgeted. So that's always a good thing. But if this is implemented in 2023, will this money just carry over? I mean, it's the, you, there's no payment until it's implemented, correct?
How, how deep into Kansas accounting rules do you want to dive, Commissioner?
Never mind.
But it's, yeah, so legally, the obligation is created when we sign the contract. So even though the payment wouldn't be made for a year, it would be made out of this year's budget.
Okay.
The auditor would apply it back.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Yeah, my question for Brad. Sorry. I'm up on this technology. But every time we've implemented new software packages, a big learning curve, we just went through that recently with our time clock, which was supposed to be user-friendly and easy to learn. How long do you anticipate? Or maybe that's Jeff's question to-
Our staff has kind of already gone through it a little bit. The representative from this carpal sat down with our office on two different occasions. A lot of it is pretty comparable to what we already kind of do. I don't think it's going to be all that hard for our staff to really get a hold of it. And a lot of the language, charging language that we do for our, our cases that we get for statutes and things like that, all that's going to be funneled to us. That's the great thing about this program. Cedric County, Johnson County, all their charging language, their documentation's going to be available for us to use, people. I mean, and so it's going to, we have this whole vast statewide network of charging language and other things we can look at and use templates we can use. And my staff, we're excited for it. Another thing I can throw out there to the, to the commission to know is this also has the ability to start allowing us to go paperless too, which, I mean, I know there's pros and cons with that. But at the same time, you know, looking at, you know, trying to alleviate costs and things like that, you know, trying to cut back on files and paper and all that, you know, those Monday type of costs. It'd be a big help to us as well, to be able to go into a courtroom. And instead of, if you're up there on a Monday, where we go into court, we're pushing basically shopping carts full of cases into the courtroom. It'd be awesome to be able to sit in the court with a laptop or a tablet and just pull it up there, right there on our computers and not have to bring in these big shopping carts full of, you know, actual paper files. So we'll have that capability with this program to be able to start going in that direction as well.
Providing we approve it, best luck with it.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair, I move, move we approve by signature the purchase of the prosecutor by carpal software as presented.
Second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 145-22, Carpel Prosecutor Software Implement Purchase. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries four zero. Good luck with it, Jeff.
Thank you.
Item number five.
RFA 142-22, Stemel and Jasper Road Rightofway, Justin Mater, county engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, commissioners. So the road and bridge department has designed a road realignment project on Stemel and Jasper Road at the southern intersection of these two roads. During the 2019 flooding, the Smoky Hill River eroded its banks to the edge of the current road, creating a safety concern. This location, along with five other damage sites around Sling County, were bundled together for a FEMA Section 428 project. And what this FEMA program will do is it will reimburse Sling County for the cost of construction of all six projects, up to a, a maximum of about $1.2 million. So in order to construct and maintain this project, additional road right-of-way easements will be necessary. Therefore, the road and bridge department is requesting the approval to purchase a permanent easement along this project, as shown on the right-of-way plan sheets that you should have on your packet. The red hatched area is the area existing right-of-way, while the green hatched area shows the proposed right-of-way. The landowner has been directly contacted to discuss the scope of the project and explain the need for the additional right-of-way, and has agreed to sell their cropland for a roadway easement at $5,000 per acre. Alternatives for action would be to approve the road right-of-way offer at $5,000 per acre, as indicated in staff recommendation, approve a different offer for each, for the parcel. In, in my request for action, I've got, I note that there's two parcels, but that's, that's incorrect. There's just the one parcel. Or three, deny the right-of-way and direct staff accordingly. Staff recommends to purchase the right-of-way easement from the Mary Elizabeth Ryan Revocable Trust. The, the easement, the total easement will be 1.492 acres of crop ground at $5,000 per acre, which will total $7,460. For the budget impact, we do request that the cost to acquire the right-of-way be taken out of our 124 account, which is our special road construction, also referred to as the one mil. And it has a current balance of about $1.5 million.
Questions of the commissioners? The FEMA will be refunding the cost of this back to the county? Or is that just the, the project, not the land?
So this is, the right-of-way should be part of the, or not should be, it is part of the reimbursement costs. So again, this, yeah, everything's got to be, it's a reimbursement. So even after construction, I'll have to submit a reimbursement request. But yeah, the right-of-way can be part of that.
And I might have two different ideas in my head, but FEMA, don't they require a mitigation, a, a fixing of a solution so it doesn't happen anymore to, to receive these funds? And, and I don't know if this is actually fixing it or just moving it down.
So, yeah, this, so this is a program that hasn't been used in Kansas yet. You know, so it was, I was told that the Wildlife and Parks was going to use this program, but they, they backed out. But what this program does is, so that $1.2 million that I came up with, that I told you about before. So what that was, I had to develop a, a plan and an estimate to correct the damage that's in there, in the channel. And then another plan, preliminary plan and estimate to mitigate, mitigate the work around there. And so, and that developed a total project for repair and mitigation on that project. And I had to do this for all six projects. And then that capped, capped the, the funding that's available. And what this program does is that we can take those funds and use them towards alternative projects. Okay? So, so what this is allowing us to do, instead of repairing and mitigating those three projects that are going to be in the channel, because there's three projects that I'm talking about here. One, I brought to you before, which is on Cunningham Road, just south of Stemel. There's this project. And then there's a project on Gibson Valley Road that I'll be talking with you about shortly. So instead of repairing the channel on those three projects, what we can do is take that money, and now I can do six projects with that money. And, and make some improvements, other improvements around the county for that. And so that's, that's what this program's doing. Am I going to explain that okay enough?
I shouldn't have asked the question.
And, and it's like, after visiting with you on this, it's like I understood a lot better, because it's like, if you take that money and you apply it to fixing this bank, all of that money could almost be totally cost prohibitive just to fix that bank.
Correct.
So now you, you go out and leave this kind of a loan, and you go fix the road out here a lot further, and you, you're able to use that. And it still amazes me that, that we can touch all six projects with that money. If, if, this money though, is, is what's allocated. So in all six projects, if it comes up to $1.8 million, that other $600,000 has got to come from some budget somewhere.
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's what I'm, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a fixed cost.
Gotcha.
These projects are all designed by you in-house and just another piece of puzzle, purchasing the right-of-way in order to proceed with the project, which hopefully you've mentioned before, it's going to be a lump, lump project for the same contractor?
Yes, yes.
When can we anticipate construction on these?
I am hoping to get these, these, the, the three channel projects where we're, I'm calling them channel projects, but it's where we're realigning the, the road around. I'm hoping to, I'm going to want to bundle those together, and I want to get them out for bid as soon as I can. But it, they've already been designed. Right now, you know, I'm trying to obtain a right-of-way. After I'm done with the obtaining the right-of-way, I've got to move utilities. And then as soon as that has been completed, I can put it out for bid. You know, and so with, with all of these projects, all six projects, has to be completed by, I believe it's June 20th of next year. And the significance of that date is it's four years from the date of the event. And so that's where it's, it's, we've got to have that done. I would, I would like to have these, the, the three road realignment projects completed this year. But again, it's going to be a lot about contractor availability.
Same old story.
Yes.
Just another quick question. I was just looking at this the other day, but it's like, where you have that culvert placed in your deal going across that new road structure, that culvert? And if that water does run through there, is, is that going to be built up on the other side of the road then and cause an issue here? Or will that old road be kind of taken out?
Yeah, the, the old road will be, would be eradicated and, and leveled off as far as the plans. So really, what, what the pipe is needed for, because really the water flows north, and, and you don't really need to take the water from the north side. But what we had to do is, in order to raise the road up a little bit, you've got to have material to do that. And so we've got to cut ditches for the material to build the road. Well, now, once you have ditches, you've got to drain that material, you've got to drain those ditches. And so it's, yeah, there's not a lot of water coming through that, that pipe. But, but that's, that's really the purpose of that.
Okay, but I just didn't know if that, that, that existing road that's there, you, will you use that to build up the old road?
Yes, but there's not, not much there, you know, because the existing road bed is pretty close to the same elevation as the surrounding ground.
Yes.
You know, so we'll, we'll take the gravel off and, you know, we'll, we'll use what we can.
Okay.
But there's, there's not a whole lot there.
Thank you.
Any other questions to the commission? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the purchase of right-of-way elements, easements as listed in RFA 142-22.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 142-22, Stemel and Jasper Road Rightofway. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six.
RFA 143-22, Gibson Valley Road Rightofway Services, Justin Mater, county engineer.
So this is the other project, the last of the three road realignment projects for, for obtaining right-of-way. So yeah, this is, this is on Gibson Valley Road, just north of Crawford. And it's kind of the same, same story as the last one. So we're going to need to have that right-of-way in order to construct and maintain this project. Again, I did contact the landowner. There's just the one landowner and one parcel that we're, we're dealing with on this project. I explained the need. They were, they were happy that we're making these improvements. And they are willing to sell the roadway easements at $5,000 per acre. And this again, is going to be on cultivated, dry land cultivated ground. So the alternatives for action would be to approve the right-of-way offer at $5,000 per acre, as indicated in the staff recommendation, approve a different offer for each parcel, or three, deny the purchasing the right-of-way and direct staff accordingly. Staff recommends to purchase the following road right-of-way easements from the John R. Show Jr. and Lois G. Show Revocable Trust. Total acreage is 2.12 acres of crop ground at $5,000 per acre. And so that's a total $10,600. Requesting that the cost to acquire the right-of-way be taken out of the 124 account, the special roads construction, or referred to as one mil. And it has a current balance of $1.5 million.
Somewhere on this road, a couple of years ago or whatever, we, we vacated one a mile or so of this road, didn't we? Where, is it just north of that?
I believe you're referring to, it's not a Gibson Valley. We did vacate from the, from the intersection of Crawford Street and Gibson Valley, we did vacate some to the south.
To the south.
And to the east. But I think that was before, before my time.
Was that-
I don't know a lot of the details.
Was that Chuck Henry? Or was that, I, I think that's who. But we did, so it's a mile south, it's a mile south of this.
Yes, yeah. Okay, so that'd be just to the south of that intersection.
And I'm all for improving this stuff, but you know, we're spending a lot of money doing this and to take us to a point where the road's closed.
Well, it, it does. It, it really is for, for Crawford. And so you can, you can go from that intersection, you know, on Crawford West to Kip, and then you can go north. So if this one here isn't a dead-end road, it does provide access all the way, all the way through there. I know that Crawford Street does flood a fair amount, is what I'm being told by, by maintenance. And so by, by opening back up Gibson Valley Road, it will provide another route to, to leave that area.
And the erosion part, or the, the issue is, is Gibson Creek? Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
So when this does flood really, really bad over in this area, will that water, does it go completely over the road that you're here at this place?
It, um, depending on what really, really bad is.
I mean, just what we've had in the last 10 years.
You know, so yeah, because, you know, we've seen some 50-year, like in, in 19, I think it was, you know, a 50-plus year rainy event. And yeah, everything's underwater. Everything's underwater. Everything's underwater because everything. And it also kind of depends on, you know, because we've got three pretty large channels all coming together in, you know, the the northeast part of the county. So, you know, if if all three of those channel systems get a lot of rain at the same time, then everything's everything's underwater.
Okay. Well, even if it's not underwater, I mean, your pictures indicate that it's it's undermining the road.
Yes, yes.
I mean, so it's just about got to be moved.
Any other comments or questions? Comments or questions from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the purchase of right-of-way easements as listed in RFA 143-22.
Second to motion.
Been moved and seconded. We approve RFA 143-22 Gypson Valley Road Right-of-Way Services. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Item number seven.
R, excuse me, RFA 144-22 Meeting Management Software, Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, commissioners. So one of the things that you expect out of your departments and out of my office in particular is to bring you things that will improve efficiencies in county operations. And one area in which I think we could achieve some increased efficiencies is in the area of meeting management. So last year during the budget process, we put money aside in the TIP, the Technology Improvement Program, for an agenda management package. What this would do would help the development of the agendas that go out to the public. So instead of one 203-page continuous PDF, you would be able to go to individual items in a more effective manner. It would also help the minute recording process, which now places a pretty significant burden on the clerk's office. It would assist with the broadcast stream. Our partners from the city of Salina have been in on the demos of these products. And then it would also help at the end of the year, when our staff goes to archive past items. Right now, that is just a big file, and we'd be able to separate those out and find past items more quickly. So we, as I said, put the funding in TIP last year for the 2022 budget. We issued a request for proposals earlier this year. We got responses, looked through those, the clerk's office, my office, the the board assistant, and as I said, we also invited in IT as well as City of Salina staff to be part of that process. Selected two vendors and did demos with each of those two vendors, and ultimately have a recommendation in front of the commission today to approve an agreement with Escribe for their management software. On the financial impact, this would be a total cost in the first year of $23,200. The way that the TIP request was written assumed it would be a bigger cost to implement and then a smaller cost on an annual basis. But the Escribe platform is cloud-based, so it basically reverses those. So the implementation cost is actually smaller, and then it would be $16,830 annually to support the, not only the the work that they do, but also the hosting of the data. So that is the recommendation before the commission this morning to go ahead and enter into that agreement with Escribe. We're looking at approximately September when we would implement that. That gives us plenty of time to get things in place. And also, that timeframe works well for the clerk's office in terms of being between the election cycles. One of the reasons that I will say that we went with Escribe as opposed to the other packages that we examined was while Escribe is sort of a radical leap forward in terms of the processes of getting the agendas produced, the minutes produced, et cetera, it's also very familiar in terms of a user interface. So it uses Microsoft Word templates for agenda items, which is what departments are used to. Some of the other packages we looked at would force departments to use a proprietary format, and we thought that was an advantage for Escribe. It's very sort of familiar look and feel to what people are used to. I will also say it will not change the process from the commission standpoint. It would make it easier to access it online, if you all access it online, but we would also continue to produce paper packets for the commission on a weekly basis. Those could actually be produced a little bit more efficiently in the software. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from commissioners.
Not a question, just a reflection of my age, I guess, but and not directly attributable to this RFA. There's a couple of others here today. We're spending a lot of money on IT software, a lot of money, a lot of updates. It it just, I just leaves me shaking my head that that we really need all of this stuff. But and I have to trust staff when it comes to spending this kind of money every month, it seems like, for upgrades. It's just, again, it's technology and and how fast it's moving and how slow I move.
This doesn't replace anything. This would be, are there any savings, any monies that won't be spent elsewhere because this will take care of it?
And this replaces a manual process. It automates a manual process. So the only savings would be in the staff time that's necessary to produce that. So basically, the time that Linda spends on these processes, the time that that Jamie and her staff spend on these processes, that would be expected to shrink. But there's no current program that this is replacing that has a dollar cost associated with it.
Yeah, and I find it discouraging that that the upfront money was not the the large purchase, but the upkeep from here on out is going to be there. And I would assume that over time, it will continue to increase. Is this a a one-year contract as far as as the cloud service and storage and all that, or?
We've envisioned it as a multi-year agreement, but of course, it's subject to the Kansas cash basis law. So you could decline to allocate it, but it's structured as a three-three-year contract.
The budget impact states that it's a an annual subscription of $16,830. And refresh me where when this would start. It's in here somewhere.
So it would actually start this year. And again, we have many budgeted in the current year, but then we would, as we're preparing the 23 budget, it would go into the computer maintenance line.
So, I mean, just assuming that it's to get passed today, it would start effectively probably somewhere around May 15th or June 1st or whatever?
Yeah, probably more like July or August, but yeah.
And that would take us to the next July or August, Mike. Is there any concern, and I know that the the cloud base keeps getting the end thing, but just last week when we had our Kansas Association of Counties meeting, and they had a big deal on cybersecurity. And and this here was a main topic that come up and is on this cloud-based stuff where it's available to anybody out there. But I just, is there any other way to go about this instead of the that way to keep it in-house and keep it on-site? I mean, I just didn't know.
So, yeah, that's a great question, Commissioner. So the the problem with keeping things in house, there are two two problems with keeping things in-house. The first is the data storage requirements. So when we archive all the agenda packets at the end of the year, those turn into massive, massive files. And when you start stacking those up year after year after year, you know, that there's the cost associated with storing that locally. The other problem with local storage is that if the county gets hacked, then that all goes away, right? So the advantage of having something in the cloud is that, you know, you're you're sort of shifting the burden of protecting that data to this third-party provider. And you're also able to access it remotely if something should happen here locally. So if we had a cybersecurity attack on the county in particular, we would still be able to go out to third-party provider and access the data up there. I do think there are there are good reasons, of course, to keep the historical data locally. And of course, in terms of like the minutes, legally, the clerk's office has to keep minutes forever, right? So that would all be retained locally. But the but the advantage of this is shifting that cybersecurity burden to a third party.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from comments from the commission?
My my favorite software question is basically user-friendly and easy to implement.
Yeah, as I as I said, that is the reason that we picked this one as opposed to some of the others, is because it's more similar to what everybody's used to now. The templates that they showed us from other jurisdictions, they're word-based, and it would be essentially like the way that departments fill out an RFA right now. It would just get uploaded into the system, as opposed to a bunch of emails back and forth with staff.
My final comment, final comment is basically, good luck with it.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature Escribe agreement as presented.
Second to motion.
Okay, it's been moved to second that we approve RFA 144-22 Meeting Management Software. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries four zero. Now move into informational items.
Bipartisan Infrastructure Law Funding, Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Hello again.
Welcome back.
Hello. So on November 15th, 2021, President Biden signed the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, also known as the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, or BIL. This is a a 1.2 trillion-dollar program over a five-year period with $550 billion of new funding. So it's about a 45% increase over over previous funding levels. Through the month of April, KDOT held local trans- local consult meetings around the state in order to provide the local government new funding availability through through this program. But they were also seeking to get input from the the local government, cities and counties and consultants who were also there about how to spend these these funds. And so really, what this, what I'm here today is just to give you a summary of KDOT's presentation and really how it's going to affect KDOT. And so what I've got on the the projector over there is just a real brief kind of summary of what what KDOT presented. You know, so all of these slides are coming through KDOT. So here we're going to look at, so we're going to start off with this 1.2 trillion-dollar program. And this program's going to be split into really two different parts. The first part is 60% is going to be funneled through existing programs, okay? And so they're calling that the their formula funds. But these are programs that are already in place. And with 40% going to be through discretionary funds through the competitive grant program. So today, and really what what KDOT was doing, they were mainly focusing, you know, over here on the, there it is, on the the formula funds, that 60% of the funds. So from that 60% of the formula funds, or again, existing programs, Kate or Kansas is going to receive $3.8 billion from that. So go to the next slide, please. So if you look at all the different programs that's going to be coming to KDOT, and all of its transportation, okay? So if you, you know, really, you start at the very top there, you got your federal highway aid, you know, of the 3.8, you're looking at $2.6 billion. Again, this is through a five-year, five-year cycle. And then you can see the other programs. And you go down to the bottom here, you're looking at, you know, cyber attack protection, wildfire protection, water infrastructure. And so that that's just kind of listing all of the different categories for the the total funds. Next slide. And so what KDOT was doing is they're focusing on the $730 million that's coming, that's just for transportation over the next five years. And the $730 million, that's additional extra funds than what they typically receive each year. And so that was really KDOT's focus is, how do we spend that $730 million? Next slide, please. So for if we're, so if we just focus on the transportation sector in Kansas, really, you're you're looking at four different, four different programs. You've got the highway program. And here, you're looking at, again, this is additional, I want to keep repeating this, additional transportation funds, $89 million annually for highways, $45 million for bridges, $8 million for the electric vehicle infrastructure, and 3.7 for rural transit. So you add all those up through the five years, and you're looking at the $730 million. And this does not include any of the discretionary funds through the competitive grant program. Next slide. So KDOT's in charge of trying to figure out, okay, how are we going to spend that money? And so if you look at our highway system, okay, just our just our roads, you know, Kansas is, you know, comprises of 113,000 miles of county roads, 17,000, about 17,500 of city streets, and 9,386 miles of the state highway system. You know, so, you know, so you got to figure out, okay, well, what's where's the best way to where we can set the state of Kansas up to to have more success in the future? And that's where we spend that money at. And they're still, you know, trying to to hammer through that. Some of the stuff that they're they're fighting through is if you look at the transported value of your your annual freight costs, they've got a pretty good, KDOT has a pretty good idea what that is on the state highway system. But they don't have any data for the city streets and county roads, as he as well as the the condition of those roads. So for city streets and and county county roadways, they they, there's no mechanism in place to where counties have to report on the condition of their roads. And so they don't know that information. And so that's something they're they're kind of struggling with right now. Next slide, please.
Justin, I have a question real quickly. On the KDOT State Highway System, 9,386 total centerline miles, is the On the KDOT State Highway System, 9,386 total centerline miles, is a, is a, is the interstate considered a KDOT State Highway System? Or US 81 as an example?
I believe that's separate.
I would think so because there's a lot more than 9,000 miles of paved road in.
Correct, correct. And yeah, in your interstate systems, yeah, you're usually, you know, doubling, every mile is doubled.
And I assume that the United, US highway, I mean, K-14 is a Kansas highway, obviously, and K-4 and things like that.
Right. Yeah. I couldn't tell you if, if you're, if they've included the US highways in this number. That, that I don't know.
Well, this number had to come from somewhere.
No, correct, yeah. It's just whether they included the US highways into that number that, that I'm not sure So, after the highways, then we got to think about bridges. And so, if you look at the, the bridge infrastructure in Kansas, the, the local bridges, so this is city and county, you know, we've got over 19,000 bridges around the state where the state of Kansas, they're responsible for 5,135. And keep in mind, when I'm talking bridges, it is the federal definition of a bridge. So, that's a structure that's longer than 20 feet in length. You know, so for the local bridges, you know, there's over 1,200 structures that are in poor condition with 37 of the KDOT's bridges that are in poor condition. You know, so where, where do you put, where do you put this additional funds at? Do you put it more towards the local system or do you try to improve the state system? Now, keeping in mind that, you know, from, from my perspective, you know, every single, I shouldn't say, the majority of trips, no matter where you're at, almost always starts on a local road. You know, they start on a local, local county road, local city street somewhere and then gets funneled to the state highway system. And so, it's, it's, you know, that's why it's very important that we, you know, that we as in the state of Kansas, you know, not forget about the local, the local infrastructure. Next slide, please. So, if we just focus right now on highways, so here we're, we're dealing with $89 million of additional funds annually for, for highway improvements. Next slide. So, for highways, KDOT's kind of narrowed that down into four groups. You have our, our local programs, you've got a modernization of safety programs, expansion work and heavy preservation. So, the second column there is where, about what the, the average annual funding for those different programs are. The second column from the right, if you throw the entire $89 million annually into a single program, you know, that's, that's what the funding's going to be increased by. But, and so, if the last column, you know, you're, you're looking at the, the total percent increase. And so, you're doubling every single one of those programs. And now, the likelihood that the entire $89 million is going to be thrown into one program is highly unlikely. It's going to be divided up, but this was just a graph to kind of express the magnitude of, of what this program's going to be, going to be doing. Next slide, please. So, if we just look at our, the local program, this is what the local program looks like for our, for our road system in Kansas. So, you look at the first one there, your local construction, KDOT administers. I don't know if that's, I'm not familiar with that program. I don't know if that's something that they threw in there. It hasn't been a program in the past, but maybe that's something that they're, they're kind of thinking of. City connecting links have been around for quite a bit. Cost share program, that's something that Sling County's, or is currently using. There's a transportation alternatives program, economic development, and then finally our high-risk rural roads. So, those are the programs that are available to the locals for highways. Next slide, please. So, now I'm going to move on to bridges. So, we're looking at $45 million dollars of additional funds for our structures. Next. Okay, thank you. So, if you look at Kansas, Kansas ranks first in the most bridges per capita in the United States. So, I believe we are the ranked fourth in the total number of bridges. I think it's behind California, Texas and Illinois, and then it's Kansas. However, we're 35th in population. And so, that's, that's where we get, you know, a, a number that's not necessarily good, you know, because that's, that's a lot of structures. Those structures are expensive and, you know, we just don't have a lot of the population to maintain a lot of those. And so, that's where it gets kind of challenging. Next slide, please. So, if you break it down into the different counties, so this is a, an exhibit of the number of bridges per thousand people broken down into each county. And so, for Sling County, we're right here in the middle. We've got 4.5 bridges per 1,000 people in Sling County, you know? So, you can look at that from an economic standpoint, that's good. Again, you know, bridges are, are pretty expensive, you know, and so, we've, we've got a pretty good ratio for bridges, the number of, of people in a county. However, and now on the flip side of that, you can look at, okay, well, bridges do provide service, a lot, you know, access, more access to people. So, that might not be good if you're looking at it from that perspective, but this is kind of how Sling County compares to the rest, rest of the counties. Next slide, please. So, our, our current bridge spending levels for off-system bridge program is $8 million. Our local bridge improvement program is $5 million. And then, for our local, local construction, we're, we're around $30 million for about $43 million per year. And then down below, it just kind of shows what, what KDOT's annual allocation for maintenance and repair is. So, we're looking about $65 million to replace or maintain the existing bridge infrastructure. Next page. So, here for the, the bridge formula funding, you know, we're at $45 million, just $225 million over a five-year program. Now, this program, it can be used on state and locally-owned bridges. However, what they, what they do have, and it's actually in the state statutes, that a minimum of 15% of funding be set aside for the off-system bridge program. And, and this program replaces bridges on roads federally classified as local. You know, so for, for in Sling County, we've got local roads, minor collectors and major collectors. And so, this is a program where it just focuses on, on the, the local road system. But at the, the very bottom is, is what's kind of impressive, but also scary at the same time. And estimating, you know, we're looking at 250 to 350 state and locally-owned bridges can be replaced or improved with these funds. That's a lot of structures to replace in a five-year program. You know, so it's exciting that we're going to, you know, we can, we can get our infrastructure, transportation infrastructure improved. Getting it done is, is going to, is going to be challenging. Next slide, please. So, this is the same graph that, that you showed before, but it just, you know, gets back into, okay, where does KDOT, you know, where, where do you spend that money? You know, what's, what bridge is more important than the other? You know, because these, this, you know, 1,230 local bridges in poor condition, you know, are those the most important bridges to replace? Well, it kind of depends on where those are at and what they're, who's using those structures. You know, it might be better to, to focus on, you know, fair bridges. You know, so this is, this is just a, another challenge that KDOT's got to fight through. So, next slide, please. The additional resources for communities, and so this is, next slide, please. This is focusing on the discretionary funds, you know, which is 40% of the $1.2 trillion or $480 billion. The total that's going to be coming to Kansas at the time of, of this presentation, it wasn't determined yet for Kansas. But the things that they're, they're really focusing on in order to go after these competitive grants, next slide, please, is you, you got to think regionally. You've got to, you know, that you're really, in order to have a, a good chance at getting some of these discretionary funds is you've got to collaborate, you know, with, with other communities, you know, government agencies, different sectors. You've, you've got to really think bigger than what your little world is. And then equity, equity is a very big thing for this program, you know? And so, this is your, you know, how is this going to improve the, the underserved or the disadvantaged, you know, neighborhoods? And so, that's, that's a very important part of, of this program. So, that's kind of a, just a quick summary of KDOT's presentation. I'll kind of just kind of go through on how, how this is going to affect Sling County. And we're going to be kind of in the same boat as everyone else. But if you, if you look at the, the formula funds through KDOT, you know, these are the local programs. And so, you know, the high-risk rural roads, you know, we're currently using that program for our Simpson Road Improvement, Improvement Project. This is also one that where in order to be funded through that program, you have to have a local road safety plan, which we, we haven't, it hasn't been finalized yet. The consultant hasn't, hasn't submitted a final report, but they should be doing that here very soon. The cost share program, you know, that's been a, that's a fairly new program and it's been widely accepted as a great program. And so, we're using this program to improve South Old, Old Highway 81 widening this year. We've got the Kansas Local Bridge Improvement Program. So, I think it was Friday, I just submitted the reimbursement request of $200,000 for the Mina Road Bridge Improvement, Bridge Replacement Project that we're doing. And then finally, the off-system bridge has been a, a program that's been around quite a while. So, again, you know, KDOT has not determined, you know, where this money's going to go through, but these, all of these programs will have a pretty significant increase. Through the, the competitive grants, you know, the discretionary funds, you know, again, like I, I said with KDOT slides, you know, we really have to think regionally and collaborate with other governmental entities is going to be very, very, very important. Some of these examples is, you know, for this is to, you know, bundle bridge replacement projects with other counties, you know? So, it's, it's one contract and you might have a bridge in Sling County, you might have a, you know, one or two bridges in Dickens County and, you know, and possibly even getting another county involved or the, the, the different cities in this area. It's all designed together, it's all one package. So, that, that's one example of that. Another one would be to, you know, collaborate with another county to improve a county road that crosses county line, you know, with one of our surrounding counties as another example. And then finally would be to, you know, collaborate with the city of Salina, you know, or the airport authority, you know, and/or KDOT to improve a, a street around the, the city of Salina. So, however, with the competitive grants, the local governments are required to administer these federal funds, okay? So, how federal funds are used in the past, it's administered through KDOT. So, KDOT does a lot of background stuff, I'm going to put "stuff" in quotes, you know, that takes care of a lot of that extra paperwork. And so, counties usually don't get involved in that. And that's going to be an issue because the locals, the locals here, the, the county, mainly the counties, a lot of the counties, you know, we don't know how to do that. You know, most counties don't have the staff or the knowledge to be able to perform those tasks in order to be able to manage those. And, and a, you know, a couple of big things, you know, when you're using federal funds is, you know, you've got to make sure you have the appropriate Buy America clauses in your contract, you know? And all, and this is going to be expanded in this, in this program from what it has been before. You've got the Davis Bacon Act, that's going to be, that's expanded beyond what we've, we've dealt with before. And then your, your NEPA approvals, which is your National Environmental Protection Act. You know, so even though for my projects, you know, I get the different permits, but this NEPA approval is something that's, like I said, I'm not sure of the process, but that's something that's very, very important that you don't want to mess around with. You want to make sure and you do everything by the book. And so, really you're, you're, we're looking at a, you know, having a consultant specializing in using these federal funds and, and helping the, not just Sling County, but a lot of counties who are going after this. So, I'm going to end, I'm kind of ending on a down note. But I think it's very, very important that everybody understands the challenges with these federal funds. You know, having all this money available is very, very exciting, but from my perspective, you know, that's going to be in the weeds dealing with this, it's, it's going to be very, very challenging. So, just starting off with, you know, a successful collaboration with governmental entities does require all those parties involved, you know, to not just get their project completed on schedule, but to meet all of those federal requirements, okay? So, in the past, when counties have collaborated and the one that I, I can think of right now, they, they bundled bridges around several different counties. And so, it's been the right-of-way and the utility acquisitions have been an issue. You know, so if, so how that, how this is works is you collaborate with other counties and everybody gets their design projects completed and out for bid and construction's done. And, you know, the feds spend money on it and the counties spend money on it. And then there's an audit afterwards. You know, the audit's always after the product, the money's been spent. If one of those entities does not purchase their right-of-way appropriately, the federal government's going to ask their money back, for their money back. It's already been spent. You know, and so, that's, that's can be, can be an issue. Or if any doesn't get the right-of-way moved, then contractor's sitting there and they, they want a bunch of money as they're sitting there waiting on utilities to be moved. I mean, that's, everybody's got to share in that cost and, and those consequences. The second, you know, is, is, you know, my staff, you know, Sling County Engineering, we really don't have the staff to take on many additional projects, especially large projects. You know, so therefore really a consulting engineer is going to have to be hired for the design and the construction inspection on this. And so, that leads to my next point is the consulting engineering world out there, you know, to be able to design $730 million worth of projects over the next five years, and that doesn't include discretionary funds. It's a huge concern of both, not just the locals, but also of KDOT. You know, KDOT's, they've, they've, their staff has kind of dwindled down to the majority of their projects are hired out to consultants. And consultants, they don't have the ability to, to, to design the projects that we currently have going on. You know, there's been the Bureau of Local Projects within KDOT has been, they, they bring up time and time and time project schedules because project schedules are not being hit. And when you're using federal funds, those schedules have to be hit and it's an issue now. And a lot of this money has not hit the table yet. And so, that's, that's a huge concern. But let's say we get over that and we, we figure out how to get these projects designed. Well, we get them to bid, now we've got an issue with contractors. The, the contract construction availability is, is becoming, is an issue right now. I've, I've heard of KDOT projects where nobody's bid on their projects and that's unheard of because everybody's full, nobody has the ability, the staff level to go after those projects. I had a, a conversation with a local bridge contractor on Friday and, and they were asking me, you know, what kind of programs, you know, what bridge replacement programs we've got coming down and, because they said they're full, they, they don't have capacity to do that. Something that we can do for locally-funded projects, you know, to help ease that issue is, you know, offer large construction windows, you know? So, you put out a bridge replacement project or a, a program of several structures instead of, you know, hey, I want, you know, these projects have to be done by, you know, the end of the year or, you know, by June 15th, you know, try to miss the wheat harvest, we might have to give them until, you know, like the December of 2023, you know, in, in order to allow them a big enough window in order to, to build these projects. And so, that's something that we can do, but it's, it's definitely going to be an issue. And then finally is the, the construction estimates. They've become very, very, very difficult to try to estimate a project appropriately. And so, when you're going after discretionary funds, you know, the, the application is going to require what's this project going to cost? You know, so we've got to put together a, we as in whoever's doing the, the application, a construction estimate. Construction prices have just gone nuts, you know, recently, you know? So, we're, you know, we're looking at, at projects, you know, in the, the 25% higher than what we had last year. You know, so you, you put together an estimate for these grant applications. If you're awarded, that, that project or that award is based off of a top dollar amount that the feds are going to spend on that project. But let's, you know, let's just say you, you added 30% of construction cost to what you think it probably should be and all of a sudden, you know, you've got 100% increase in cost. Well, the locals are responsible for that additional cost. And so, that's, that's an issue. You know, so there's, there's definitely some risk there.
Okay. I'm going to try and help out Debbie Downer here a little bit.
Okay.
So, Justin has very correctly identified many of the challenges that are associated with this matter. with this massive infusion of funding. And I don't want to minimize those because those are real. And he is, he has spent some time talking about those challenges. But the bottom line is, this is a generational opportunity to pull money into Saline County and North Central Kansas for our transportation needs, not just transportation needs, but also some broadband needs and some other things. So in order to deal with all of those things that Justin has identified as the existing challenges, we need to first and foremost, put together a plan. We need to be strategic about what it is that we want to go for, where we think we can leverage it, how we think we can partner with other entities to maximize our chances of getting it, and how we can make it attractive to contractors in this environment that he describes. So, so we're starting down that path. That's the message that we want to leave the commission with today is this is out there, lots of challenges associated with it, but we're going to be bringing you over the next few months, some plans, some contracts with consultants that we think will help us to compete effectively in this world that Justin has described. So that's sort of the message for today.
Let me add a challenge for you then. At last week's Kansas County Commissioners Association meeting, I had the opportunity to visit with the administrator from Dickinson County along with the county commissioner. And we got to kind of brainstorming a little bit, and this is totally in conjunction with what you've got going on here, where two counties could work together. There is a stretch of road, Magnolia east from Kip Road into Dickinson County. I think it's about three miles of, of Saline County Road and three or four.
Six.
Six miles in Dickinson County?
I believe it's six till you get to the next asphalt-surfaced road.
Okay. Well, nonetheless, that short stretch of road, if we could work together and get a contract through this, would connect I-135 through to Morris County, if I'm not mistaken. With all the people that are coming to Salina to work right now from Southern Dickinson County, Marion County, you know, so forth, that would work real well with K-4 up to Marymount Road currently, so that would be about in the middle of that. We could sure bring a lot of people to and from Salina that would, that would use that road. But my point is to work, as you have stated, collabora, like collaboration with Dickinson County and propose something together, that looks to me like that's right up their alley, what, what the feds are looking for and the state people are looking for. So I will challenge the three of you that I see sitting over there with, with, with that to, to work with Dickinson County or talk to them at least, get the preliminary talks going and see what we can do because that, that is one stretch of road that really makes sense to pave, to me.
Yeah, that's, that's one project that I've, I've had in mind of.
And not only that, I mean, it's, it's a road that we consistently have a problem with from maintenance standpoint with water and, and keeping it up. Man, we'd really like to, but my only thought is, I wouldn't be in favor of paving that unless Dickinson County was willing to pave their portion of it. So.
Correct. It'd have to be almost one project, you know, we, we hire designer together, consultant together, it's designed, it's one project through both counties. And, you know, that's how the, you know, the, for the competitive grants or, you know, and I'm not sure we'd have to look into to see if one of the, the existing programs, you know, it could fit into one of those, which would be maybe the high-risk rural road program. We, we'd have to look at that, but yeah.
I, I was just also thinking that perhaps the Chamber of Commerce would be able to come up with a number for you that how many people come from that area to work in Salina and Saline County? So that might also be an influencing number for the federal people to take a look at. But again, I encourage you to, to call Brad Homan in Dickinson County and talk with their people and, and work together and see what we can do.
Sure.
Justin, I appreciate your report. I hear more questions come out of your report though than answers, and I can sense your skepticism, I believe that's the terminology. My question is though, in spirit of collaboration, would a good candidate be to work on North Ohio into Ottawa County? Because there's a ton of people that come from Bennington and on down.
Yeah, I think it would be, we're a good project for that. I think, you know, we, we, let's just say we improve that road up to the county line and it's just going to be up to Ottawa County, what, you know, they, they want to improve that up to. I'm not sure how many miles it is up to the next paved road. You know, because, you know, whenever we, if we submit a project, it needs to be, have that connectivity.
Correct.
You know, and so that's, that's going to be crucial. So, you know, having a paved road that ends at a dirt road, I don't think, I think we'd be wasting our time putting those applications together for that, so.
Again, communication will answer that, so.
Correct.
Just a thought.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Item number two.
Road and Bridge Update, Darren Fishel, Administrator.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. This is our Road and Bridge Update for the interval of March through April. We sent 17 different employees to seven different training classes. We sent them to asphalt road maintenance, culverts and trainings, OSHA 10-hour construction safety training, workplace job site and equipment safety training, LTAP risk and liability issue training, LTAP gravel road maintenance training, and human, human resources training for the supervisors. I know it's, it's snowy or rainy now. We did respond to two, it's snow and ice events in March. We did some trash pickups with the wind blowing, we had quite a bit of that. Next slide, please. We did complete our winter trimming projects. This is just a couple of slides that show the before and after. This is our side lashing. Next slide, please. And this, this is where we did some channel clearing. And because of this project, what we found out was the trees were actually marking the curve. So after the project was over, we went out and delineated it. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the Fallen Grader pad. You know, last year, the county commissioner approved buying a piece of property down the Fallen. Because of some budget constraints, we weren't able to completely finish that project last year. Next slide, please. This just shows a picture of, we were able to get the electricity installed, the shed put up, some lights, some security lighting and the fuel barrel hooked up to electricity. Next slide, please. This is a picture of Crittenon Road south of Brookville at the Radio Tower Site. We had, we had started this project over just several months, doing what we could. Next slide, please. This, this winter, we were able to get into and remove, do the tree removal that allowed the power line to go down the, the east side of the road. Next slide, please. And this is just simply the access road itself to the tower off of Crittenon Road. We were able to gravel that. Next slide, please. This is a picture of Woodward Road just going north of Magnolia. And there was about a half mile, going north towards Cloud Street. There was about a half mile stretch of that that was, that was earth. And when it would rain, it was one of those that just get tore up every time with the traffic. Next slide, please. We upgraded this half mile to gravel. Two reasons, one, it needed to be done. It probably should have been gravel a long time ago. And with the closure of Simpson Road for that construction, it'll allow people good access to, to get around. We did replace 14 culverts. I've got just a few pictures of it. This is on Crawford Street going east of town. Next slide, please. Couple of entrances and some ditch cleaning at an intersection on Gerard. Next slide, please. This just shows where we replaced the culvert. There's a concrete culvert there, you see the hole over to the left. This is why we use continuous culverts under unpaved roads is because they'll flex. These, the concrete culverts, when they, when it freezes and thaws and the ground heaves, it breaks the belt. And so we've been, over the years, just trying to get these replaced as we've had issues with them. Next slide, please. And we also do just remove some culverts from time to time. These are entrances that haven't been used, an illegal entrance down there for a field. We removed that pipe and, and the one on the trailer there was just a, a plugged-up crossroad culvert that hadn't been used in a long time because things changed, drainage changes and, and it wasn't needed anymore. And it's always good to get those things off the inventory. These are the number of miles and places that, that the rural operators bladed roads over the last two months. They also replaced culverts. Next slide, please. And they did 36 layback projects. These are all of the locations within Saline County that we either rocked the complete mile or sanded the complete mile. Now, some of them you'll see are, are both. What we like to do is we like to get some sand over the top of the rock. It locks it together, makes for a little bit better roadway. We hauled 3,900 ton of AB3, 5,000 ton of rock, and 3,750 ton. These are all of the locations in Saline County in the last two months where you would have seen one of our trucks hauling aggregate two. Next slide, please. We are currently rebuilding two miles of Simpson Road. They're south of Waterwell to Farley. The red one in the middle is just going to be, it got a lot of aggregate last year. And so we were just simply going to be reshaping and touching up the surface of that. And then the next mile to McReynolds. This got, this road got, it's been in on our plan. We were going to get to it last year, but with the flooding we had, we weren't able to complete that. The goal was to get this done prior to harvest because the fall harvest actually tore this road up pretty good. And it, it is a heavily-traveled agricultural road for the, the grain producers. This is a stretch of Thatcher Road up north, north of the county. It's currently an earth road. If you look at the surrounding area, there's really not a good way to get east over Old 81 if you're coming from the northeast part. Our intention this summer is to upgrade that to a gravel road. Crystal Springs Road, it gets a lot of traffic. Hopefully this will alleviate some of the traffic on Crystal Springs Road. It sits on mud, clay, and sand. And when it rains, it, it becomes a nuisance and there's no, no really good way other than spending millions of dollars to upgrade it. So we hope this will alleviate the traffic on Crystal Springs Road. Most of our line items are within the normal parameters except for our fuel line item. It's kind of been hit pretty hard. I think our current year budget has the, the money's in it to withstand it pretty easily, but we're sure keeping an eye on it.
Darren, I continue to get call after call after call about, about our rock on the roads that is ruining tires, puncturing tires and so forth. I, I want you to know that I'm going to be one of the, hopefully there will be more to follow, of the commissioners that will, is going to put up some resistance this next time around on how we purchase our rock or what we purchase. I know that there's a reason behind it, financial, most of it probably, but I just want you to know that that, that pushback is going to come.
I will have some comparisons for, for the commissioners.
Well, I have to echo Commissioner Vidicson's remarks. I too have, have had a lot of, a lot of interest of the constituents about the type of rock and when it's put on and how it's put on. And personally, I, I experienced flats myself caused by the rock product. I don't know if it's a product problem, a timing problem, how it's dressed out or what it is, but it, there's just too many people that are experiencing damage to their tires driving on, on that product. So I look forward to any input you have on that.
I do too. I welcome discussion. And at budget time, I think it'd be a really good time to sit down and, and discuss those things.
Any other questions, comments for Road and Bridge?
I'll go back to, to a positive side of that too. And your pictures reflect it. What you take that, that salzair and make a silk purse out of sometime is, is amazing to me. There's, there's some beautiful pictures up there about what you've done with some roads. Woodward is a good example. So you and your, your staff out there.
Well, you know, when we, when we have the forces and the effort, you know, we can, we can really do good work. Some of the times we don't really have all the forces and the effort we need at every place.
And the weather for all your laybacks, which I have mentioned several times ago, it's unbelievable the hour, the miles that you guys got accomplished.
Weather pays a big, weather plays a big portion in, in everything we do. Our, our, our roads are only as good as what the weather will allow because it takes moisture to bind them together.
And guess what? Half-inch rain out west last night.
And need more.
I, I was going to say that also, you know, on the negative side of, of the rock situation, I have received probably more calls in the last three or four months on what a good job that the department has done in certain sections of road and so forth. So those calls are coming too. People, people are aware of the efforts that are being made and, and the strides that are being made on your, on your earth and, and county roads.
Some of it is a little bit unusual for folks, just things that our department hasn't been doing such as pulling shoulders. And when you pull shoulders, you get a little bit bigger windrow. We're working with some rural operators that don't have a lot of experience with that and it looks a lot different to, to people. And when they see something different, it, it upsets and alarms them. And so we just try to explain our processes and why we do what we do. I sure would encourage you to have them call me. And maybe I can shed some light on the situation or why we do what we do.
All right. Okay. Any questions of the public for Road and Bridge? Seeing none. Item number three.
Commissioners' comments?
Comments from the commissioners? Started off, I think we all attended the, the county, state county commission conference that was held here in Salina. A lot of things that were on the program were very, very useful and all in all, I think it was a good conference and Saline County did a fine job of hosting it.
And Mr. Chair, I might add on, we had our local talent that were featured speakers, our health director and our appraiser, they did an excellent job with the panel discussion up there. And it was really educational and we appreciate our staff.
There you go. Anything else?
Volunteer appreciation was Friday night over at the senior center and a lot of chicken served. I never got a head count. It seemed like maybe numbers were down a little bit, could have been weather-related Friday with 80 mile an hour winds. Who knows?
Anything else? Go on to announcements. Any announcements? I, I will announce, I think the state county clerk, they're having their convention. You want to expand on that, Tammy?
Yes, it's the Kansas County Clerks and Election Official Association meeting being held in Salina. And Commissioner Wiese is going to be introducing or saying a few words to them and they'll be here this week.
Very, very few words.
But they'll be here this week. The county clerks and election official associations getting together during their annual meeting.
Very good. Any other announcements? Seeing none, I would see if we want to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Moving second, we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries, 4-0. Thank you very much.